Work session of Toledo City Council for October twenty second, twenty twenty five, the order at six oh five P M. At this time, next item is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the two the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Kaufman?
Here.
Counselor Sylvia?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Keating?
Indeed.
Counsel President Mix?
Yes.
And I am present, we have six, we have a quorum, we may conduct business. So our items this evening, first up in discussion and information item is council rules. Who would like to start this out?
Madam City Attorney, are you in the Zoom meeting yet?
Um, I believe so.
All right. So, um. Mister Mayor, in the interest of brevity, I will simply, I'll simply say that tonight's meeting uh will be focused on your discussion of your uh rules and and the city charter, which has been on your agenda for a little bit, this got pushed uh from September to October, so that you could receive uh the Jensen Strategies A R presentation to help inform this discussion. The City Attorney is with us in person this evening to facilitate your conversation. She has some uh presentation slides that she'll be presenting uh over the course of that presentation, and I would like to turn the floor over to City Attorney Savani Mill.
Thank you. Thank you, um. And I will just jump right in, so we have, this has been on the uh table for a while. Um, there's a lot of material here in your packet are a few things, the current city charter, current council rules, and then the League of Oregon Cities models of each of those. Um, so what I would like to do tonight. What I'd like to do tonight is uh just kind of follow this roadmap, walk through the current charter and the capitals very briefly. Um, this is probably more for the public and anyone viewing this recording later than members of council, but I think it would be helpful to go over the purpose and function, just very briefly of both of those documents, how they interact, and over provide an overview of what is in each of them, discuss briefly the amendment process for each of them, because they are different, and then go over the topics, um. Uh, do a general high level comparison between the League of Oregon Cities models and the current city charter and council rules. And then I would like to hear from you all what topics and areas where you think there may be some adjustments that you'd like to make. Um, and actually before that, just so we're all on the same page, we, I'd like to walk through, just give an overview of suggestions that staff have for adjustments to both of those. And I'm anticipating that this will be an ongoing discussion, this is kind of the first piece of that, because there will, if any amendments are going to be made, then there will be some staff time and adjusting those, and then we'll come back before it cancels. So if if that sounds good, if there are any questions at this point, please let me know. Um, if not, we'll just jump right in. Okay. Okay, so the um a city's legal authority comes from, actually from the Oregon Constitution, and when a city is incorporated, it draws its governance um from the city charter, so the charter is essentially the city's constitution. Federal laws and constitution and state laws and constitution are above that, but the city's charter is under those two thing, two categories of law as the governing document and all the other actions that the city takes has have to be in line with the city's charter, so they can't conflict. Um. And the city council in accordance with the city charter enacts and acts through orders, ordinances, resolutions, and again, all of those have to align with the city's charter and the the rules set out there. And then it the authority of staff is to administer those policies that are set out in the order resolutions and ordinances. Council rules govern the city council's processes and actions, so those are rules that you all impose on yourselves and on um certain city processes that are under the purview of the city council. So these include rules for city council meetings, um appointments of officers, the city attorney, city manager, municipal judge. Uh, they promote efficiency and consistency in meetings. They allow for respectful and courteous debate amongst each other, but also with public. And in that way, help to facilitate the public's access to the city council and to the city government. And they also serve to allow for a smooth transition when there's new council members who come on board, so governance doesn't change every single, there's a new council member, a new set of council members. The current charter um addresses all the things that it should, the city's name and boundaries, uh elections and how those happen, personnel, appoint of officers, again, city attorney, city manager, municipal judge, the legislative and administrative and quasi judicial authority of the city. Those are three different types of authorities that the city has and acts in slightly different ways when it is um uh in each, wearing each of those hats, so legislative authority, that's through ordinance or through ordinances. Administrative is typically through resolutions and orders, and then quasi judicial authorities, that's for things like land use hearings, where you're sitting basically as a as a judge or as a fact finding body. The charter addresses powers of the city, the roles of the city council and individual council members, and then there are miscellaneous provisions that say how to interpret and amend the charter. The council rules um address the rule of procedure for the council, quorum, presiding officer, types of meetings, agendas, the order of business, um voting rules. And they also address ethics and decorum, and that includes things like gifting, conflict of interest. They set out rules for council communications with staff and how the staff is meant to support the city council, and then they fill out the structure of the city council, including committees that the city council appoints and how you fill vacancies on the city council or in those committees. For amendments to each of these, a charter amendment will require a public vote, so the way to amend the charter is a council must pass a resolution referring the changes to the public. Um, and then for, so for this cycle, if there were any changes to the charter, that wouldn't be on the ballot until um November twenty twenty six. Most likely, the the council rules amendment, by contrast, can be passed by resolution, yes.
As I understand it, we could put a charter amendment up on May election, since that is considered a statewide election, same as you would be able to with the uh November election.
Okay, that might be correct. Um, and I can confirm that, and I think um based on based on the timing that we have now, if we can get it, you know, there's, if we can work backwards from there and get all the changes in, then um, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so one of the twenty twenty six ballots, I should say.
Very good.
Um, council rules amendments are just by resolution, and those can be effective when you enact it. Any questions thus far? Okay, so I'm gonna start with the the council rules and the League of Oregon Cities model rules. So in general, the League of Oregon Cities model covers the same ground in much more specific detail. So an example of this is the order of business um section in the charter or or in the um. Sorry, I guess I should say council rules. Yeah, in the council rules section, um two point six B, the order of business is just in a paragraph form. The L O C model splits out the order of business into a long list that includes a specific order of things, not all of which are going to be relevant for every meeting, but that's in the chapter one, section six of the model. Uh, there's an exception, the Toledo's Ethics and Decorum section in chapter three of the council rules is actually more robust than the League of Oregon Cities model suggests. And so although there are differences between these two, that doesn't mean one is um is better than the other. The League of Oregon Cities model is meant to be just that, a model that cities can take for themselves as is or adapt to what um cities need. And so there are several provisions in the in Toledo's current council rules that are specific to this city, and their rules that were likely developed based on um past experiences and past councils. There are some that are pretty specific, so it seems like they were carefully considered and implemented for good reason. Um, but there is more flexibility in the council rules to make adjustments. Um, and then there are, there is at least one provision in the League of Oregon Cities model that's not included in the Toledo council rules that we'll get to recommendations in a little bit, but um having a specific process set out for land use hearings before you are faced with a land use hearing, in my experience, has been beneficial and it's just easier to have something on paper that you follow, rather than trying to make it up as you go or or learn what it is as you go. Um. So with respect to the charter, Toledo's charter actually tracks the League of Oregon Cities model pretty well, but that includes additional provisions, so in that one, the League of Oregon Cities model is kind of the bare bones, and then Toledo tacks on additional information and language um that makes it more specific to the city. The one exception there is in the ordinances section, which is the current charter, uh chapter seven point two, and we'll get to that in a bit, but that is one area where we might suggest uh making an adjustment to align it with the model. And then I'll just give an overview of the staff suggestions and um for the council rules and then the charter, and then would like to get your feedback on any specific input that you may have at this point, and then we can go into staff's specific suggestions, if that makes sense. Okay. All right, so staff suggestions for the council rules. So again, if there are specific areas where you think something in the council rules isn't isn't clear or isn't working as it should um or should be adjusted, then we'd recommend that you look to the League of Oregon Cities model rules first, to see if there's language in there that addresses the situation. Um, I would recommend that you incorporate the model land use hearings rules. We also have some suggestions on the structure of council meetings, um including the frequency, and just wanted to, an opportunity to to take the opportunity to share some information about um, you know, the the resources and staff time that it takes to prepare for city council meetings, appear at city council meetings, and talk about potential ways to um make that more streamlined. The, we're also going to suggest that you develop a strategic reserve fund policy, a council compensation waiver policy. I have a couple of clarifying questions, and then there are also in both the charter and the council rules, some areas that should just generally be cleaned up in terms of formatting, um consistent capitalization, watermark, just kind of basic things like that. And then I've already mentioned it, but suggested changes to the charter would include the ordinances model language. And then um I know that this has been on your minds for a while, so it would be great to get some feedback from the council members on where you see either the charter or the city council rules as needing adjustment. If there's anything you would like to add, take away, change, um, do we have any ideas at this point?
The thing that we've all talked about over this last time is the uh wordage for interim city managers.
Okay.
Because right now, it it does not distinctively describe whether or not we're talking about a city manager or interim city managers living in the county.
Okay.
Generally looking at how we treat the city manager versus the interim city manager. Providing some clarity on where we want there to be differences, or we don't.
And ideally, we'd never have to know if another interim sitting. Just in case.
Immortal Richie.
Okay, so at present, the the council.
Charter, it's in the charter.
The charter, uh the only distinction, I think, is the uh limitation on appointing or dismissing employees. And it sounds like you all would like potentially more oversight.
There is, no, the problem was residency.
Okay.
There's a residency part in there that I know we did, because I worked on the charter. And it, there's no distinction between city manager versus interim as to whether or not they're residents.
Right now, we require an interim city manager to be a resident of Lincoln County.
And you, and that's not necessary.
That's kind of asked a lot.
I was gonna say, it would be
Lot of money.
It would be difficult to find um a qualified uh candidate that already resides in Lincoln County, so in addition to the salary that would be paid to an interim, then the city is also potentially then having to pay for housing for that individual.
Okay, sorry, sorry, Rich. What we're talking about is the charter, the adopted city charter. It says, this is page six of fourteen, and uh it says a city manager need not be a resident of the city or of the state at the time of appointment and not required to reside in the city, however must reside within Lincoln County. So we want to make sure that that's clarified to mean only the city manager, not the city manager pro temp. Okay.
And and I'd just expand a little bit and in terms of what our discussion could be here, because to give some context, Savani, um the advice that we received from council early on in the time that um that I've that I've been on council was that because there is that one actual stated differentiation between the authorities of the interim city manager as different from the actual permanent city manager position, it essentially makes it so that every other duty responsibility expectation has to be treated as the same. So I would only expand it to say we should probably look at what the expectations, duties, et cetera, are for the interim city manager, kind of more holistically, and try to see where where there are reasonable different differences we want to put in place. Just to make sure that we're looking at that as a realistic possibility of needing an interim city manager at some point, let's make sure that we're not setting ourselves up um, you know, for difficulties in finding that person or attracting a good person, or hindering them from being able to do their job effectively, because we only have one or two differences. So I I agree, the residency is what's driving this, but I would say let's look at that whole um definition of what an interim city manager is, and make sure that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot.
Well, I think I I I would disagree with what you just said. Um, only because if you go further down, if we have a little paragraph that says when the city manager is temporarily disabled from acting as manager, or when the office of city manager becomes vacant, the city council may appoint a city manager pro temp. City manager pro temp has the authority and duties of city manager, except that a city manager pro temp may appoint or remove employees only within council approval. So it says he has everything else is the same except that. I think Counselor Keating, your your point is that maybe you should consider a council should consider whether you actually want the city manager pro temp to have all of those duties without approval of council.
I I'm saying that we look at what differences might be recommended by council, what differences might be recommended. I I'm saying, look at it more holistically, so that we're not finding ourselves in a situation where we are a year from now saying, let's put this other difference in, or let's make this other individual change.
Okay.
So I'm just suggesting that if we're going to be looking at what the expectations for how we differentiate between a city manager and an interim city manager, let's not look at one bullet point, let's look at them all.
Okay, so.
Look at all of the reasonable ones, you know, and and make sure that we're not. It doesn't matter, it, if if I'm the only person who feels this way, I'm not in the majority, and it doesn't matter, but.
Uh, I think you still have a valid point, and you need to consider it, we're only in the beginning process here, so, yeah. So, okay, let's um. So I do agree with that interpretation, as it's written, the only thing that is different between a city manager pro temp's responsibilities is that they have to come back to council for that specific approval um appointing or removing employees, and so I would note that that, in my view, does not include um promotion, discipline, that is just an up or down, hire fire decision making that requires council approval. Um, we could walk through, so the duties of the city manager are outlined in uh section D, and we can walk through those and see if there's a a reason to differentiate.
And that's and that's partially what I was thinking about too, is that if we have, say, a one week interim city manager, for whatever reason, or a very short term interim city manager, do we want them to have, say, the power to suspend or do things that are not as extensive as an appointment or as big as an appointment or a termination, but have the ability to promote people, whatever? I don't know, I, it's not a situation that I know a ton about, um, but I just wanted to kind of say, is it worth us looking at the whole thing? So, yeah.
Where is that located in our charter?
Um, page six of fourteen, sorry, I'm second D, it's four.
I'm on the website, I don't have a package that shows that.
Oh. Oh, yeah, I don't. I don't know, it just says city charter one, two. It is in um four point, chapter four. Does that help? Yeah. Yeah, and you're you're gonna go under city manager. And then it 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 goes down from there.
Would anybody on the council, uh, I have, I printed off a couple already, would anybody like a hard copy? Anybody else? I'll I'll print one out for your friend.
Thank you. If you're proud of our bouncer's copy, thank you.
So, um city manager must attend all city council meetings unless excused, I think that that probably you would like your pro temp to attend all city council meetings.
Oh, yeah.
Making making reports and recommendations to the mayor and city council about the needs of the city, that's the same, enforcing and administering ordinances likely the same, and correct me if if I jump in if I'm making assumptions here. Um, I think four, appointing, supervising, and removing city employees is probably in the supervision piece, that might be an area where you would want to consider um how to address the pro temp situation. Well, I would say, I mean, I I would think they would supervise, but you know, as far as appointing and removing, I think they still need.
I don't know, I don't know. I don't know that I want to talk from anything.
Yeah.
Able to discipline.
No, I agree with that.
Do something, because if they come in with a headbutt, discipline is such a lost. Like, it could, yeah.
I would like to include city and city volunteers also.
Yes.
I will say that we need to make sure whatever we're doing with the charter, that we make it so I can understand it, because frankly, if I was in the public and I didn't understand this, we're not vote just because I don't understand.
That's why I spend a lot of time at the timbers with a lot of different people.
And Rod, I generally agree with you on the volunteers thing, but I think, if I'm not mistaken, that volunteers are treated as employees under Oregon law.
I don't, I don't know that, I'm just, I'm trying to draw the distinction so it can be understood.
Yeah.
Because I think that's part of what we went through.
Yeah, I agree.
I absolutely agree with that.
Yes, sir.
I I would just add really quick, as as you're having this conversation, I think what Councilmember Sylvia said a minute ago is very important. Um, as Savani and I, uh, excuse me, as the City Attorney and I were preparing for this presentation this evening, I looked up the the approval um in the November general election, and the the vote difference was, I think, single digits. And I think what you said, Counselor Sylvia, about if you don't understand it, you're gonna probably vote against it, because or change something, or not vote at all. So I I I do think that that is a care of very important consideration during our conversation, right, myself.
And it can be um simply saying that these were the issues that we have identified and are now taking the measures to define in our charter, so that our big kerfuffle, maybe we'll, I don't know if you might say that word, doesn't happen again. Um, but we find maybe a more refined way to say that.
Well, exactly, and you know, that's the thing, is that there were things that happened during this that had not happened in anyone in this building's memory. Okay, and so if we were all treading on new ground, and so how do we fix this, so starting in future councils and city departments don't go through the same kerfuffle as was gone through before, let's create a new wheel to run into, not enough, not, let's not have another old one. If that makes sense.
That's not great. And I think, I think we have to find a balance, we have to find a balance between what I think we all recognize, or I I think we've discussed several times, the the need for some sort of public information capacity in our city. Um, we need to find the balance between utilizing that type of a position or those types, those types of public information resources, and also recognizing that we need our charter to be technically and legally precise. Um, and so while there is, I think, a great benefit to making sure that our language is as clear and uh publicly accessible as possible, then I think what we have to use more of that public information capacity for than necessarily what is a legal document.
Right. So I think to that point, at this point, I think we should have kind of a high level discussion about the concepts, because the wording is gonna take some work on on our side um to make sure that it is legally sound and workable for staff, and also that the public will be able to understand it, so I think those conversations are gonna be more technical, and maybe we'll bring those back to council later, but at this point, I think we should have the conversation of what generally would you like to see addressed, and then we can figure out language to propose to you at a later day.
Sounds good.
So I think one of the things would be city manager versus manager pro temp theory, you know, differences. I don't know, maybe we need a whole section that justifies a city manager pro temp. So what what concerns do you have about the city pro, city manager pro temp, what actions would you like them to bring before council before taking? Well, I. What restrictions do you want to place on them? I have to figure out a very diplomatic way.
Do you have any suggestions, Mister?
Technically, they can't, they don't really is the question statement, they don't really oversee anybody outside of the heads, and the heads are dealing with their their own employees, right?
So I think what's in there currently, can't hire or fire without coming to city council, I think the only the only other decisions that I see at this point and um uh would be maybe promotion or disciplinary decisions. That gets a little complicated when we're having, you know, and potentially an entire council weigh in on an employee discipline decision, that could be something very small, so that's.
Go ahead.
We also have an interim do a eight grade change or something.
Yes.
Thank you.
Things that could have budget impacts, that could be something.
Well, they got somebody's paycheck out of us.
A reclassification, oh, they.
Yes, he did.
They got somebody's bank?
Yes, they did.
Okay, it was, I was aware of a reclassification upward, I wasn't aware of it.
It wasn't a reclassification, it was just taken away what was guaranteed.
Huh.
Okay, so that that has to be addressed. The other thing, I mean, I just just, so the three things that I see in this is, one, what you just brought up. I've forgotten about that, thank you very much.
That's what I'm saying, discipline before my time.
No.
No.
It was.
It was right in, it was right in the.
It was in the cusp.
Yeah.
So was that um the thing on, but the the ability to get rid of volunteers? I don't want that to go happen again while we're in an interim. And the last thing is the residency requirement, and what I would, what I think would work is they have to be in the building two days a week. So they can have staff meetings, so they can have those other meetings that need to be in person. Say with other county officials, those type of things. But um as Judy did when she was city manager. Um, she had to end up doing two or three days a week. Um, virtually because of her long COVID. It worked, but she was still coming to the office a couple days a week.
Thanks.
So I think we can make that work.
I think, uh, sorry, Council President, uh, I think my my question would be, do you wanna get that granular? Or would you wanna say that council has the authority to establish the residency requirement and the work schedule for the interim city manager?
Well, I definitely would want them here on our um business meetings.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess my 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 point is I don't want a council to to say that, well, we're gonna save money by they never have to be here, other than the council meeting.
Okay, fair point.
Um. Because it's, if they're not here, there are certain things that won't get done.
Yep.
Andrew.
Um. I might suggest that those are parameters that um would not be prohibited, if not stated directly, um, in terms of how we contract with in intra.
Yep.
Um, so I don't know that I necessarily want to put it into our charter time based expectations, because then if we do find ourselves with a candidate who says to us, you know, let's say, let's say we had somebody like Rich who lived in Washington at the time that we met him for the first time. Um, and he had plans to come and spend six months in Oregon, but it might take him a month. We might not be able to hire him as quickly as we want, because our charter says that if he's not able to get here for four weeks, he's in violation of our charter because we have an expectation of two days. So we could, if we don't have that type of expectation built into our charter, have a contract that says for the first four weeks or for a certain amount of time, it's fully remote, and then we're going to expect two days a week, or three days a week, or four days a week, based on the contract negotiations.
I understand where you're going.
I'm agreed that we're going to. Hurt ourselves.
I, I'm trying to avoid the whole must live in Lincoln County. And if we only have to pay for one night, say, that's the only stipulation that that we add into this is a housing of one twenty and, you know, one twenty a week.
And I just think that if we stipulate that, um, if we changed it to say, and um if we were to change it so that the interim city managers only differences are, and we simply added an item that the residency requirement is not included, then when we do get to the point of a contract, we have the ability of that the contract negotiation to say.
Okay, so, I see where you're going, eliminate the four interns.
Yes. That that we say these are two exceptions, right?
Yeah, that I can see, okay. That does give the flexibility that you're talking about, but it also gives the ability to say, look, you do need to be here.
Yes.
I I have a question for.
I would add that to the contract, yeah.
I I kind of the way the council's going on this, um.
Something different that I wanna. For these guys that I shot.
Yes, ma'am.
Savani, can the council, can the council put in a a a requirement in the charter, say it was two days a week in office? Can they also put in the charter that council has the authority to waive that requirement by a majority vote? Or is it, if it's in the charter, then it can only be amended if the charter isn't? Cause I I'm wondering if we can split that baby, can they say two days, but to the to the to council member pleading point, can they tell the vote and waive that requirement from contract?
Um.
I would try to keep it as simple as possible, and that's why Andrew's idea of just waiving that part of the city manager duty. Now, wait a minute, I'm now crazy, fire away.
You can't just settle me down and then all of a sudden like a wind up points, now go, anyway.
I've been able to do that for years.
So now that I like Rich's idea, so I like that one, anyway. My other thing that I think is very important that we should learn from our experiences. I think we need um, or I think there needs to be a requirement or a s- a a stipulation for somebody to be a city manager pro temp. They cannot be involved in the removal of the prior city manager.
No, I had to think about that one for a second.
Would that be something?
That'd be part of the qualifications.
So, um, so, and 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 I I think that that, I mean, so we can, sorry to interrupt.
It is possible that some of our discussion here might be better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or an executive session, if there is specific legal advice.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, so I will note that as one of those items, okay.
See, I told you it was different.
Okay, and then going back to.
And to speak, Jim, very broadly and not on like that specifics, any any past specific circumstances. I think that the selection process, when we are looking for an interim city manager or accepting applications from city managers would involve a um at least some advice from legal counsel in the event that we are creating liabilities for ourselves in who we select.
Didn't give that to us last time.
So I'm speaking only about the hypothetical concept of an interim city manager being selected, not about any testing. But that generally speaking, adequate legal counsel would tell us.
Water into wine.
If there are candidates that might create legal risk.
Well, okay.
So that might be more of like a general human resources practice.
Or even in the council rules, I think that, so you could, there's potentially a a set in the council rules for that, but I think that's. Yeah, I think so, that would probably.
Sounds more like, you know, in the intent of a complaint by an employee against their supervisor does not give that employee eligibility for their supervisor's interim position.
My other question is about looking in there, does our charter have any language about an HR director?
Uh, no, but it, so it, the charter is um so the charter doesn't get that specific with respect to.
The only, the only specific.
Particular.
Is what we do.
Yeah.
What he does is directed by us. I'd like to fill, you know, we've made the, we have made the directive, we want an HR, we want a a full time HR. So that is what he has gone out and has done with.
So that doesn't have to be in our.
Right, that doesn't have to be in the charter.
The charter is a very high level um doc, so it does discuss point of officers, the city manager, city attorney, municipal judge. Um, beyond that, it's more the personnel section. Uh, section five. Really discusses generally employee, so employee responsibilities in the charter, and designating those positions are delegated to the city manager. Um, the council authorizes the compensation of employees, city man, city officer and employees as approval of its annual city budget. So that's the level that the charter operates, that is that these are the positions, this is what they're compensated, and then the city manager with from approval, with approval from the city council um directs the employees and sets out rules and procedures governing employment.
I was just thinking that now that we're having a HR, if it was supposed to be in there, we probably should do it, but it's not.
Yeah, and a lot of, a lot of the employment questions, um, as city manager Heaton pointed out, are going to be in the employee handbook and in employees' policies. So the the charter is the overarching governing document, as council rules direct and govern you all. Some of that includes council's relationship with staff and how you interact with staff, how you interact with officers. Um, but it's mostly to govern council meetings or business and those other high level items. Okay, and then I wanted to go back to, so on the um, they kind of split the baby option for the charter so that there there are situations that you can put things in like that in the charter. I do think as a general practice, it is better to be specific and simple and address those kinds of hypothetical situations in more flexible documents, like a contract or like an employment policy.
True.
So that could be something, for instance, that was in the employee handbook, um, city manager needs to be here generally two days a week, and that's something that we could put in there, but that could obviously be waived through a contract.
Is is the city manager in the employee handbook?
That's a question I will ask tomorrow.
Question, Shauna. No.
Well, it.
With our employee handbook is also under the process of being updated, so they may not be currently, but they may be at.
So if we, but I do think, so if if it's not addressed there, um, because it's an appointed officer, that's addressed through these documents, um, then I still think it's better to be more general and just say the interim doesn't need to live in the city, and then you can have a contract that specifically states what you need from that particular person. Are there any other, um, so we have not, they don't need to live in the city, they can't fire volunteers. I'll think about proposed language that might split out some of the disciplinary responsibilities for an interim and when they need to get approval from council, and um. Are there any other?
Just that one about um them not being responsible for the prior city manager's removal before they be considered, I mean, I think we should make it a policy, I mean.
Okay, well, let's.
Yeah, and then if it's in the employee handbook, it's.
If it's in the employee handbook, if it doesn't apply to a city manager, the city manager's not there.
And I I'll connect with Shauna and just see what what the rules are, um.
It's not there now and they need it there.
And I and I will just be candid, I don't fully understand the circumstances, and I would like to, and I think that's probably executives.
Okay, yes, I agree.
Yes, it is.
So I've got a a bigger thing that's a little bit more than the interim, but would have, but often applies to interim situations. In fact, we're seeing this in a neighboring community.
I'm sorry.
Um, not welcome, um. Um, so four one C. City council may combine any two or more appointed offices, except the office of the city manager, municipal judge, or city attorney, municipal judge. There were audible gasps at the circumstance that was described in Lincoln City at the League of Oregon City Conference at the idea that the interim city manager role was being filled by the city attorney.
Yep.
Um.
Okay.
The room was
Yep.
set off by how problematic.
Wait, 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 that doesn't prohibit that.
I'm saying that is. Because, no, say that again. Basically, I would say that no two of these positions should be combined. Um, and here's the reason for it, because um in the event that there is a complaint against the city manager or an issue with the city manager, or you go to the city attorney, if they are the same person.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Yep.
So.
But here's the deal, for city, the situation in Lincoln City is not even as cut and dried as that, because they actually split the city manager position between, I believe it was the police chief and the city attorney.
Yeah.
So it wasn't just the city attorney, they could, they could then go to the police chief instead, so that makes that an invalid argument. But that is that one.
That's that's one, that is one, that is one circumstance where that is somewhat protected against. But there are still enough overlap, overlapping problems.
But then who's the tiebreaker between the two co interim city managers?
Who is that?
Yeah.
So that is why, if you talk to said city attorneys plural, because I talked to several, that is why that community is now in the process of redoing their charter. Because all this was listed as how things would work in their charter.
Yep.
And they're like, oh my God, I don't ever wanna do this again, let's fix it in the charter. So I think that's probably one of the things that cities, you know, whether it's us or Lincoln City or anybody. You gotta review these documents, because stuff keeps happening. You know, the world doesn't just stay stuck in, like in our case, nineteen ninety two, which is when it was last reviewed, okay? Things have happened, we moved on, now we're trying to refine it, to bring it up to, you know, address the issues we've been having into.
Yeah.
And everybody needs to do that, and I tip my hat to not only us, because we've stayed on, you know, we've stayed on this pounding the hammer on this, but we have an attorney that has stepped up to do what we need to get done, so we know what we're doing is right and not just reactionary. Okay, and we've got a city manager now with a fresh set of eyes who can look at it and see, are we doing this for the betterment of our citizens, or are we doing it to assuage our how do I say this, our irritation with past events there.
Well, I could say we're just, oh, off time.
Exactly.
I'll say for why I recognize this, which is not just hearing about, you know, you know, and I I know Frank was also sitting in the session that that I was in where this question was raised about the two positions being held by the same person, and yes, I know it is split. But I also know that I don't think I'm the only person on this council who, when we were at the earliest stages of um, after um, after we had terminated our city manager, looking at kind of the panic and not really knowing how certain slots were going to be filled, we had, I was not, I don't think I was the only person who started to ask, could we put Mike in real quick, can we put the city attorney in real quick, because he's at least somebody who reports to council, who we know have a relationship with, can we get him to just help keep the ship afloat until we figure out the next thing?
Yep.
So, you know, without even thinking about the consequences, right? And so. Right, and so I think these are three, like, we recognize the conflicts of interest between city attorney and municipal judge. We recognize the conflicts of interest between the city manager and the municipal judge. There's an A and B and a B and C type of thing here, that's sort of happening, that I'm wondering why we're not connecting A and C. Um, so, um, so I would just suggest that um we make sure that for both permanent and interim capacities that we are spelling out that um that none of the people who are in any of these three appointed o- offices can hold two of them.
Completely agree, and this is not, this, the wearing too many hats issue is not um unique to public bodies. This comes up all the time in litigation for all kinds of entities, so I.
One more too, I would add our finance director can't, shouldn't hold another position as well.
She's not appointed.
No, not by us, we can't, oh, that's up to the city manager.
This assistance.
And that was.
It can be addressed in the employee.
Right, thank you. Well said.
That's what I was getting at, because we had the one person.
Can be addressed by us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any additional um changes, things that aren't working, concerns with specific provisions of the charter or the council goals?
Um. So on your, uh, and this is something that you brought up, was the strategic reserve getting a, a?
Yes.
So. As the person who created this strategic reserve back in twenty ten um, because we'd had a chunk of money come to us with no strings attached. We at that time did not have any way, short of the the budget roundabout stuff to do anything on the spur of the moment, or to do minor support issues through things around the city. No, we never touched it until COVID. So it went ten years without having a dime taken out of it, because we all knew because it had to be something we all agreed to. That was the one stipulation, was it had to be a unanimous votes for that money to come out of strategic reserve. And we set up a business program for our businesses to help support them, and then we backfilled that. Um, backfilled that program, and we backfilled the strategic reserve with the ARPA models that came in, or the CARE Act, I can't remember which. Um, we have touched on it in subsequent years for things that we've all agreed are important to the community, and. And need to have a wind away to fund it. But when the initial ordinance, if I, if I recall correctly, says it has to be unanimous vote of the council to spend it. It can't just, you know, it, for lack of a better word, as someone put in a post on social media. Couple of weeks ago, it can't just be for a pet project. And so there there's some of the background surrounding it, I know what you're saying. But I also know that we have needed that flexibility. You know, wide guardrails with a very specific trigger, seven people have to agree. Uh, for us to be able to use it.
We use a bunch of it this year to bail out our budget to speak, I mean, to help with that, I mean, we ended up giving up part of it in a chunk and it was out of our budget.
And two years in a row, we felt about our, uh, history museum.
Um, and that's kind of where we look at that, is that it's.
It's kind of emergency money.
Yeah, well, it's it's something that most municipalities don't have. Um, one of the things I would like to do is do some sort of, buy, put some budget parameters around how much goes into it. Um, because right now we're putting the SIP money that comes from George Pacific into it, because there was no other real place to throw it into. We don't necessarily need all of that money put back in there every year. But we should have some base amount, because that SIP money is going to keep going for another twenty years. So what's the percentage of the SIP money that goes into that? So I think that's something that should be either in council rules or in some other document. Maybe a resolution we do, but some way to say that we only take X amount of that per year. And we still have the ability to put more out, yes, sir.
I I think the important consideration on on this topic and and council member Sylvia made the the point a second ago is. The the council has at times used this money to support organizations within the community.
Yes.
But that really happens when somebody thinks to come to council and say, hey, can the city help us out?
Yes.
Right, and that's not a, that's not a bad thing to want to support organizations within the city. But by not having a a published process, you still, as council, would still control. Who is the recipients of those funds, and you can confirm or you can approve or deny a request.
Right.
But by not having a published process that says, here's the form that you fill out, once you submit it, council will come, will consider your request. Then it's open to anybody, I think that's where the the issue comes in, is because it could look potentially like council is being selective. By not having a documented process, it doesn't change the control.
Let me bring up one of the other ways we use that, those monies. Remember the monies that we got back from FEMA for the disaster? We approved using the strategic reserve to pay for that overtime and the work needed to be done. Because we didn't want it coming out of public works, because they had too many projects, they had to make sure to.
And it would take too long to get reimbursed.
And it would take so long to get reimbursed, that the best way to do that was to have it come out of our strategic reserve. So does, with that process, would we then require that, uh, city?
And you can.
I saw you shake your head.
But yeah, I'm I'm thinking about it as a public process, so some of the agencies that you have supported. They have thought to come to council and and ask, can you support us? And you have chosen to give that support from the strategic reserve. But there are other organizations in the community that that it may never occur to them to come talk to council without there being a published process. I would not say that Brian has to fill out a form, because that's an internal transfer, but going outward public.
But we still had to agree to that.
Correct, yeah, because it's still your fund.
Right.
So you're not delegating to me the authority to say, oh, sure, Brian, take it out of the council's strategic reserve.
So I have a real quick question, on your unanimous vote. What happens if there's a conflict with one of the counselors, like, just for argument's sake, say I was working for the homie house and helping them out?
Then that would be, you would need to declare an actual conflict of interest.
And that wouldn't have to be, because you said unanimous.
No, unanimous is of the people who can vote.
Okay.
Yeah, so if it if. So if you accuse yourself, council member Sylvia, and there's five members that can vote, and the vote is five to nothing, that's still considered unanimous, as it's.
Yep.
Oh, can I go check?
Go right ahead.
Thank you.
Very much, mayor. Um, so. Can we, can we relegate it to within our community? What we do with the funds, I mean, that that's one thing. And then the other thing is, I was thinking about what you said, uh, Tracy. At our last meeting where you met with the summer festival gals and they didn't know they could come. So then the next thing is, how do we let people know? I mean, we don't, I mean, we're going to end up getting a whole bunch of people with their gimmies. Well, so then how, how can we? How can we structure it so that it works?
You know, when in my past life in Washington, one of the responsibilities I had with multiple agencies was over the lodging tax. Um, we, in Oregon, the transient rental tax. And in Washington, you could open up an application process and anybody that had an event. An organization, a facility that supported tourism, they could come and request funds from from the city. That happened one time a year, most cities opened it in September, they had their applications by the end of the year, this is a calendar year budget. You know, uh, state, and so then those recommendations were factored into the budget process. Because the the lodging tax advisory committee had already made their recommendations. And so that's, that's one way to consider, to to council member Burns's point. Mayor, you said earlier, you want to have, you know, a a framework for how much is, goes into the fund, how much is is eligible. So if you just opened it up year round and said, come whenever you have an idea. You you may have already dedicated how much you have available to the public by the time this other good idea comes around. The limiting factor on that is if you said, you know, we're we're a, uh, mid, mid-year to mid-year budget. So as we're going through our budget process, if we say, okay, the strategic reserve application process opens in February. It closes in April, then those are factored into the budget, and then somebody has a great idea in May for something in September.
And that's part of the reason for the need for flexibility with this fund.
And and so that's, you're absolutely right, and so, um, the the thought, kind of where I'm I'm getting there is. Whether you do a one-time-a-year application, or you say as as council policy, we're setting aside X number of dollars for community. Investment in this budget, whatever that dollar amount is, and once we hit it. Then that's it for the rest of the year, and you open the application process and folks can come at any time.
We already have what, um, we have our contributions fund that we do that that way already.
Yeah.
Um, and that is, and that is limited to five oh one C threes within that that help city folks.
So you have a good framework for that already, you can take that similar framework and apply it to. Um, you know, the the whatever portion of the strategic.
But we do it differently, okay, with that. You take a portion, a specific percentage proportion of our sin taxes. Or we either, and then the committee breaks that money out into all the people that ask. So they may not get all that they want, and some may get more than they want, because the committee comes up with what, uh, what goes out. And then the council has to either ratify it and and approve it, or send it back to committee for rethought.
Now, the way you, the way you stated that, Mr. Mayor, if there's sixteen applicants, is every, is all sixteen guaranteed to get something?
No.
Okay.
Because we, because the contributions committee has to make a determination. How much do they actually support Toledo residents?
Yeah.
And we are not the contributions committee.
We are not.
Right.
We have one council member on it.
And that's where I'm saying with your strategic reserve. You you, I, it would be my recommendation that you, for the, for the funds that you would be making available. To local agencies, whether they be five oh one C threes or not. That you have a a a, an official process that you have published, here's the application form, you can come at any time of the year. But if the, if the dedicated amount is is used up, it's used up. Uh, but then it's open to, it's open to everybody. Um, so that, the recommendation comes from a place of equal access. Um, and so to your point, you would, you would set the parameters. You would, as council, determine how much is available in that fund and who gets it, that would be all seven of you. Um, so it could, it could look very similar to your, to the the city's contributions committee's structure, but still be retained by the the council. But this way, somebody doesn't have to go, oh, I wonder if the, if I, you know, the city has money available and how it, it's out there for anybody.
Thank you. This was never meant to be a fund to just give away. This was meant to be a fund for emergencies only, and that is all we have used it for. Whether it was making sure that our local museums did not close to getting the homie house off the ground, because that is an emergency. Our community needed that desperately. So everything that we have used this money for has been emergency funds, it's not necessarily ever been meant. For somebody to come along and say, okay, I want to do this project, so I want, you know, fifteen thousand dollars. I understand equal a- access, and maybe we should have a form, like, if somebody comes to us for an emergency thing that we decide we want to, okay, we'll pay that. We'll say, okay, we need you to fill out this application.
And I, and I think that what you just said there is very important. Emergency can be one of the qualifications.
Yes.
That you as council decide, right? You decide however you want the fund to use, but if you want it to be a fund. That the community can come to you and say, we have this emergency, we would like your support. Then it should be open to any individual or organization that feels that they have an emergency. And then it's up to you to decide if you agree that that's an emergency and one that you want.
Now, the second part of that that I wanted to bring up is, we have ARPA money that we have put aside for downtown renovation, people can get micro loans or whatever.
It's urban renewal.
Urban renewal, okay, so that is, that's different. And so if we, through this process, find that we have a lot of different people coming to us and saying, we need this, we need that. And and it can be allocated on the other process, maybe we as a council need to say, okay, maybe we need to allocate more than fifty thousand dollars a year to that. Maybe we need to allocate more money to that particular one.
And that would be a a ordinance change, and all, and we've done it before to increase the percentage of our sin taxes.
So I mean, so what I'm saying is, this process might identify a greater need in another area that we. We would move it to, a- a- and I, I mean, I'm just thinking, we just need to keep our eyes up, you know, our, our, our ears open and and. Be flexible, but I do like the idea of streamlining it, I like the idea that, okay, anybody can come to us. And we'll either, you know, as a council, we can say, okay, this qualifies here, or hey, why don't you apply for this one over here? Because it's really not an emergency, but we do have this other funding available, so maybe we can just point them in the right direction.
Right. Andrew has been waiting.
Andrew.
I hate leaning back, because then I lose sight of people.
Um, so we've had, I mean, obviously, when we look at homie house, when you look at even. Um, museums are doing, coming to us quarterly to ask for, um, to ask for support. Um, you know, that is, that's money that's coming out of our strategic funds, one of the things, um, you know, that's separate from the contributions committee. Uh, but one of the things that, uh, comes to mind for me that I think might be worth considering is, a lot of municipalities. Give a certain amount of charitable autonomy to the individuals on council or on their board of commissioners, um. To say, we're going to set a certain amount of money that each counselor or commissioner or whatever position it at, it is. Um, they have discretion within certain parameters.
That's pain for pet projects.
Andrew, no, just bear bear with me a second, I've never heard that in more.
Our county commissioner, is it?
Commissioners, that's, that's a, okay, counties are a whole different ball of wax than cities.
I see.
I don't have to speak if I can't finish.
And I think that.
New one statement.
It could be a good idea, but it goes against the original unanimous spending of. Because it has to be the full panel that agrees on how it's spent. Not the vote panel agreeing that Jackie could spend fifty bucks there and.
There's a very strong consensus against hearing that I have to say something. Don't put words in my mouth, Andrew, I haven't said shit except letting you talk.
No.
I'm not putting words in your mouth, consensus is half of us, and that's the three that just.
Interrupt the mayor, but it's not okay for him to interrupt you, because he was speaking early and you shut him down, started talking.
When?
Let's stop earlier.
Now, listen, all of us, okay, I wanted to make sure Andrew understood, because I know he's lived in many other places. And maybe that's where he's seen it, but in Oregon, I have never seen a single municipality. Or even heard of one with that type of financial ability of a single counselor. Not anywhere in this state, so my question would then be, I don't even know if it's legal. Because maybe they do do it in Colorado or back east somewhere, but at least here in Oregon, that has not ever been done.
What just happened here, the tone totally shut down the conversation and. We need to work on. We really need to work on. I I would personally like to hear what Andrew was suggesting.
Go ahead. So while we have our city attorney here who could speak to or research the legality of the suggestion that I'm making. Because I don't know if it's something, one, that we would even want to consider as a council. I don't know what municipalities do have it and don't have it. It is something that I've heard about that our own county commission has available, which is why I mentioned our board of commissioners when I was prefacing it. But if it is something that is legal for us to do. Recognizing that some of us do have individual things that we care about in our community that might not necessarily. Grant writing resources, or might not have, um, you know, the full-throated support of all seven people on this council. And if there is an individual council member that says, hey, this is a cause that I care about, and if the council has set aside a certain amount of budget. For each individual counselor to invest in the community and causes that they care about. A set amount, a limited amount that does have serbeded parameters, such as five oh one, C three, six, whatever status. Is required of it, that this is something that might be worth us exploring as a city council that gives us some autonomy. If that's something that we want, it was an idea.
Now, may I respond?
Sure.
Well, that'd be all right. We already have that. You could take the stipend that is authorized in this document that we've been looking at. To do any and all of those things that you are given, that is your money to spend how you desire. So. That is, that's already allowable by your stipend. We don't need to have a whole other framework to do that. If you want to spend the money that you earn as a city counselor, use that stipend for whatever. Uh, outreach you want to do, how, whatever programs you want to support, you are free to do that.
I can do that as a private citizen too. So I would think that it would be an ethical issue, because people would be able to, and this is just my brain thinking, people would be able to pick. Certain businesses, individuals in the community to help with money while leaving other people out.
That was what. But that's why, but that's what I'm saying. Use the money that you are already getting as a stipend as quote your fund to do that with.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could just mention really quick, we are at seven thirteen.
I know.
As you recall, we recessed the executive session, so. My recommendation would be recess this meeting, we'll go into the executive session. Ms. Miller can give the update that she has prepared for you this evening, and then we can come back to this, uh, this topic.
Okay, so with that, I will put us into recess on this meeting, and we will start up the executive session in two minutes. We will follow the work section back to order. So, Savani?
Okay, so, um, I think just to keep us moving, I want to summarize what we had talked about on the strategic reserve. Policy or what I think the next steps are there, and then start working through the rest of the, um, suggestions at a high level. Anticipating that if there's going to be specific revisions, there will be. A version of tech, like a red line that would come back to you for a specific discussion. Okay, so on the strategic reserve policy, um. Some of the information, some of the discussion that you all have had tonight was information that you and I, looking at councils, uh, past practices, wasn't aware of. For instance, that it was, it needs to be a unanimous decision for emergency situations. And so I think all of that information and those criteria would be useful to put into the council rules to make the public aware. Yes.
I don't know that emergency is the right term.
Immediate need.
Immediate need.
Yeah, it's something that doesn't wait till the next budget term or the next or the next or the next. It's they need it sooner than that. An emergency.
The immediate need though, that.
That's what I mean. It's immediate need, not emergency.
Okay. So I think we can keep working on kind of the specific language, but having that as a general parameter and our suggestion really was so that there's a strategic reserve, which is the council's discretion to use.
Yes.
But there's a, there has been historically in the past, an opportunity for community groups to come in and request money from that fund. And we don't have to change anything about the amount of that fund that is reserved for that purpose. You don't have to set a specific amount. But it would be useful to staff and to the public to know what, when is it worth it to come in and ask for that? What is the council going to consider? What's the process by which the council will make that decision? Historically, it's been someone comes in, makes a presentation to the council. And then, um, it also could set out clear parameters for what happens if you receive that funding. So is there a reporting requirement? Like we had talked about with the homey house, there was a matching fund requirement. Letting people know that if you request this money, there is an ongoing obligation to the council. This is what it may look like.
Right.
We explain that.
Yeah, and we have.
And just putting that.
It would be nice because if we had this process, we wouldn't have to explain it every time.
Thank you.
But you can pass it off to staff.
I'm gonna bite the inside of my mouth right now on that one.
I'm just gonna get out of the line of, yeah.
So. Is she a primary? Oh, darn it. The other pieces that you all were discussing in terms of, so, um, council as a whole can direct the city attorney or request that the city attorney look into um, other items. So if you would like me to look into whether you, you could split out and have individual council member funds, I can do that. Um, but actions like that and actions like setting a specific amount aside are probably better suited to the budget process than setting those in the council rules because that could change from year to year.
Right.
I think I'd be interested in Rod's question of the legality of at least the idea that I had mentioned. And I, and I'm not necessarily advocating for the idea. It's something that I, I have seen. I think it's something that's interesting and maybe worth considering because it could be interesting, but but I, I do agree, I don't know the legality of it in Oregon at the city level enough to say, oh, this is something we should absolutely be considering, but I would be curious if there's anything legally preventing us in our next bu- budget cycle from considering that type of allocation.
There's nothing that stops you right now if you have an interest.
And, no, no, he's, he's talking about whether or not it would be legal for us to take some of the strategic fund. He's not asking it. Right. He just wanna know, is it legal or not, here in the state. But I kind of, I agree with him on that. I, I'd like to know the answer, even if it doesn't go anywhere but getting that answer.
Knowing that you have the option.
And I, and I appreciate, I appreciate the suggestion that it could be coming out of our stipends or out of our personal money or anything like that. I guess I'd only push back on that and say that, you know, city council is, um, we wanna have a council that is representative of our community. Um, and sometimes that's going to include people who don't necessarily have the money that they can be donating to causes that they care.
Right.
And we wanna encourage people to be able to do that. And sometimes the hours that we spend here are valuable to some.
I remember those days. That was my first seven, eight years.
You know, and so while we did include, you know, this fifty dollar stipend for a couple of the meetings that we have here as city counselors. That for some people in this type of position might not be something that they could harbor.
I don't disagree with you. I, I, with that, with that line, not at all.
Yeah.
Cause that was me the first seven or, seven or eight years, okay? Cause I had five kids. And so I get it. I'm just saying that one of the things that, that we have to do as counselors, okay? And it's the old appearances thing, right? Perception is reality. And it gives one more thing for people to try and pick at. And I, I don't know about the rest of you, but the way, the way things have gone over the last several years. I, I don't wanna have people have a reason to picket, members of the council. I want that, I want us to be able to do our job in relative peace. That, that's my thoughts on that. And so, anyway, Jackie?
My personal opinion on it is that it separates us. If she has allowance, you have allowance, you have allowance, you have allowance, they have allowance. We each are separate. Whereas with the way it is right now, we're a panel, we're a group that all agrees on how to spend money. Rather than separate us, we need to do things that appear to join us in the public eye. Rather than separate us, although I do see the value of having that money available. But there's nothing that stops Jackie from wanting to have a pet parade and ask us for the money. And we give it to her. Or Tracy wants to put in a public pig farm.
Actually, there is.
A petting zoo.
Okay, that might be okay, but the rest is not the pig farm.
If we all agree.
No, no.
Tracy can get her.
Pig turns in violation of earth. I know, I know, I just.
Well, and real quick, uh, to Andrew's point, um, Jackie can remember this, he wasn't there because he didn't wanna be part of the stipend. The main reason that all of us that worked on this charter review for the stipend was to give people an ability to be able to pay for daycare because when there was three of us here, a lot of people came in and said, do you pay? Because I got kids, I need to pay daycare. I'm blessed enough that my wife is home with my kids. But there's others that aren't. So if we, I mean, the stipend is there to help people. We're trying to attract over people to come help us. And that was the whole reason for the stipend.
So we don't spend it on donations.
And Jackie, I have a lot of respect for the, the argument of, um, you know, wanting to kind of show cohesion.
Right.
And I think that, you know, my initial thought, and I've got two points. One is a little bit on, um, on Frank's comments. Um, one, that we as a council as a whole would be voting on whatever the expectations of those individual budgets would be if we were to put right, what are the parameters that we're setting? Um, and so that is something that we are doing collectively, that we are doing as a team. And then kind of also giving again, some of that ability of us as individual counselors to also kind of, this is to get to Frank's point. The recruitment aspect, the volunteer aspect in this community. If I as a member of the community see an opportunity for me to be empowered to focus on the things that I care about in a meaningful way as a city counselor, that's something that could attract me to running for office or applying when an appointment is available. So I think that there are a lot of factors that, you know, could make something like this valuable, whether it's looking at it as something similar to the rationale for the stipend of saying, is this something that we wanna incorporate as an incentive for volunteerism for our council that we're going to enable you for the service that you're giving to the community. We're going to enable you to be able to give to the things in the community that you care about that you might not otherwise be able to. So, you know, I think, I think there are a lot of, I think there are a lot of sides to this and, and I only brought it up because I thought that it might be something that recognizing how much I think all of us have demonstrated in the year that I've been on council, how much we want to give to our community, how much we wanna support things that we care about here. That that could be something that, that could be a model that is at least worth considering.
Oh, here's my problem with that. You just explained a model where, okay, in order for me to serve on council and serve my community and do what I swore an oath to do, I want you to give me money that I can give to whoever I want because I should be able to do, you know, I joined council to support my pet projects, not to serve with the community as a whole. Now, I'm not saying that's what you're saying, but it certainly can be interpreted that way. If we are telling people, oh yeah, if you serve on council, we'll let you use some money, we'll let you give money away. Then it, it's defeating the purpose of the council coming together and giving back to the community as a whole. Once you start saying, okay, here's your little fund of money and your little fund of money and your little fund of money here. Then, then you're losing the cohesion of the council, you're losing the intent of it. And, and I think it, it, it causes people to do it for self-serving reasons.
Yes, sir.
I think we're, I think the council's rabbit holing on a specific topic. And the question is still, as has been brought up, is it even a, is it even an option?
Yeah.
So what I would suggest is we have the city attorney get us an answer on that question. And then we can bring this back in a future time, but it, there are many other items in your documents that I'm sure you probably wanna discuss this evening. So I would suggest we, uh, we go forward unless the city attorney has anything that she wants to add on this.
My only other point, not to bring us right back where we were. I actually need approval, I think, from the council as a whole to look into this.
To know if it's legal.
Okay, great.
Same, but you disagree with that.
I have one, two, three.
Did you say you disagree?
Oh, I, no, I.
And then Savani started. Is there consensus for the city attorney to bring you back an answer on this question?
We can do.
Okay.
Great.
Great, yeah, then we can.
I know.
She's not disagreeing.
Okay. All right.
Against it.
Uh, anyway.
Um, this next one, I might call on our city manager here. I think you've heard it from multiple people. Um, multiple different ways of just wanted to bring us back to the conversation on frequency of council meetings. So your charter says you have to have one per month. Your council rules currently say you have two, and we currently have a practice of having two business meetings and a work session.
So one of the, one of the things that I've, I've thought about and I, you know, I'm, I'm the city manager, I'll come to whatever meeting you have. But I, I think about the, uh, the additional time that it takes for our staff to prepare agendas and, and other documents and uh, attend meetings when they have items on the agenda or there are our city recorder or city attorney. Um, and so this is one of the questions that was on my, uh, my proverbial list of ten thousand things from my predecessor was to look at as part of this, this process. And so I think first off, Savani really hit the importance of whatever the regular meeting schedule, and I, I use that not in the term of regular meeting, but in, in what your established meeting schedule is should be consistent across all of your, your documents, Mr. Mayor.
So when we were doing the charter review, it was pointed out to us that, yes, well, because if you, as I was told by the attorneys in the room, which there were two the city meetings, the city council must meet at least once a month at a time and place designated by its rules. In our rules, it says two meetings. And may meet at other times in accordance with the rules and laws of the state of Oregon. How that was interpreted to us is we didn't need to change that because our rules say that it's two.
Correct. And I, I think to the city attorney's point, charter says must meet once, can meet more. Your, your rules say twice, but your practice is, so I agree with you, the charter can be the minimum and you can do more than that.
Who's explaining to us?
Yeah.
That could be the minimum.
But your, your practice should match either your charter or your rules. So.
Regular, here's the problem. November and December, every year. Yeah. So in other words, we do meet twice in November and December as per the council rule, but we don't meet that third time. We don't have work sessions because they're always Thanksgiving and Christmas, and so we don't do that.
And the work sessions aren't considered regular meetings.
Aren't considered a quote unquote regular meeting.
Used to be.
Maybe, okay, maybe when you came on council, that's how they were described. How they were always described for me in my first twelve years back in the day, okay? Was that they, that we literally only had them for work sessions. So but what I mean is, is that that's when we scheduled that, we started doing meetings with the commissioners, remember that? That's when that was scheduled. If we had a, if we were to have an annual meeting with the port, that's when that was scheduled. They weren't necess, they weren't business meetings.
Right, it was information gathering. It's coming up on the next agenda.
When you talk about regular meetings, we're talking about business. Right. So that's why those things, that makes sense to me, now maybe not to anyone else, but we have to, we need to have two business meetings a month because we tried this for six months once. And we didn't get out of here until midnight on those meetings. And I personally, we all pitched a fit.
Yes.
Says, we're not doing this anymore. So we went, we went back to two.
So I, I think the, the reason I bring this up for discussion is, is a couple of, of points. Um, as we said, your charter says one, your rules say two. We don't have anything that I know of that's written that says three.
It says at least two.
It, it says at least two, correct. But my, my point is, there isn't anything that says that your regular meeting schedule is what it is. So when I, you know, talked with the mayor about we scheduled the executive session, then we scheduled a special meeting to take action on the, the CBA because you can't take action at a, at a work session, right? So my, my point is, if we don't have anything, website, rules, you name it, that says that it, that the third meeting of the month is a regular meeting. Is it by definition a special meeting? There's, there's ambiguity there.
It's a work session.
And you're, you're correct. Any, any meeting that happens on a day and time that is not published as a regular meeting time becomes special. Were you, were you watching me? Okay.
Another suggestion. Why don't we put a table, a table of definitions in the rules? Definition of a regular meeting, meeting where business, where.
Attorney's always like.
Where business is. Set in, well, here's why. Because right now, all we're arguing is semantics.
Yeah.
We are, we are dancing on the head of a pin over what is a regular meeting be. So we put that, we put definitional terms in there.
My question is, why are we voting at work sessions?
We're, we're changing that, we're changing that practice.
Yeah, well, and see, but that's, but that's part of what we go into.
That's what it means. It's like it shouldn't be regular or regular.
And that's, and that's like just put in a session of a, a small, little, these are the definitions of what we mean by this type of meeting and by this type of meeting and by this type of meeting and this type of meeting.
And, and so then the other, the other question that I, I have, and this is a, this month is a bad example because it's almost eight o'clock and um, but you know, when we talked last, at your last meeting about November, and as the mayor said a minute ago, your regular work session would be on, um, the, the week of Thanksgiving. So in November, if we have a work session item for council, we all agreed at the last month, the last meeting that we would incorporate a work session into your regular business meeting on, uh, the week before. So I, I say all of that, a- as I said a second ago, this would be a, a bad month to say, oh, let's have a work session as part of your business meeting, because that one would be one where you would be here longer. The question really is, I agree that you, that two, two meetings at a minimum. The question really is, do you want a third regular meeting? Or do you wanna have a work session that is planned as part of your third meeting, your, your third week meeting, have two regular meetings a month and be able to call a special work session if needed. So that's really where we're, we're kind of getting into, what do you want your regular meeting schedule to be?
Usually happen in work session. Not a regular meeting?
Oh, sorry. Andrew, go ahead, Andrew.
Uh, two things come to mind for me. One is, um, that if we were to add a work session, we are, um, essentially this, this could, this I say could, it very likely will be perceived by those who weren't so favorable of the charter addition of compensation stipends because it would essentially be a fifty percent increase to the stipends um, in terms of the economic impact of the charter because regular meetings are what the stipends are allocated to not work sessions, not special sessions or executive sessions. So if we were to add a third regular meeting, even if it is a small amount that the stipends are providing, um, I know that it was contested enough or at least a concern for the community that we were receiving anything. Um, it would feel a little bit like a bit of a bait and switch to be changing it for, you know, by fifty percent, um, by changing the nature of our meetings.
Yep.
Um, the other point is I think we could honestly just take them off of the set schedule and in our regular meetings determine when an item is you know, strong enough or of enough importance that it requires us to have a work session and they don't have to be on a specific cadence. They're based on the. And they don't have to be on a specific cadence. They're based on the availability of council, or the availability of the resources of the people who are needed to make that work session possible. Um, we have, I think, in the year that I've been on council, or a little less than a year, we've had so much going on that we've needed pretty much every work session. And I remember at least in those first couple of months, we were basically just making, we were just setting aside every Wednesday from five o'clock to nine o'clock, whether it was for an executive session, or a special session, or a work session, just because of how much we were doing. And I think too, that in this community, are very involved and passionate um, council that wants to be hearing from the community, wants to be having presentations, wants to be having brainstorming sessions. And so we are inclined to have, if there's that Wednesday and we're setting it aside, uh, to have a work session, to have a discussion, to have a hearty debate like, like we do, uh, and are. Um, but I do think that if we uncodify it, or if we do kind of put it to a point where we say, use Rod's suggestion, have the definitions, so that in our regular meetings, we are deciding when it is necessary for us to have it more on-call.
And I, I think you really hit the nail on the head there, uh, counselor, and you know, I, during the regular meetings, during the city manager report, you know, I can tell you, hey, look, you know, in, in the first and the third meeting, hey, it looks like we're not going to need the work session, you know, this month. But then maybe, you know, say that was the first week, then something comes up, third meeting, oh hey, by the way, council, we actually, we'd love to have a work session on this topic next week, is everybody available? Yeah, so we, we can kind of have it just be a regular update of whether we anticipate the need for it or not.
Gracie?
So my question is this, the staff wants your meetings?
Yes.
Okay, let's make it happen somehow.
That's what this is coming to. Let's just nip it in the knees. Quit pretending, quit dancing around it. The staff wants for your meetings, let's make it happen.
Okay, so here's the question then. And because the purpose of the work sessions are not just to have time to talk about, well, what's right in our face, okay? The purpose of the work sessions were those times to have the special meetings with other political bodies. To do an in-depth dive into whatever, so for example, um, whenever we do a water wastewater rate study, whenever we do um, our updated master plans, whenever we do the comp plan, whenever we do all of this stuff that we have to be up on as councilmen. Okay, it's stuff that we need to be able to, to at least be able to go onto the public and explain it to them. We need to have work sessions to dive into it, so we can get all of our questions answered, so that we are able to then go out and answer the public's questions. I don't consider work sessions, quote, regular meetings, because I consider a work session, I mean, a, a regular meeting, the business meeting. Those are the things you have to be at, right? Because we have to have it for them to make those go, right? One of the things that, and I wasn't in the stipend part, but remember when we talked about the regular meetings within the charter, was that we might only have one because of unforeseen circumstances, but we got to get one in a month. Okay, because we have to be able to do the business at least once a month. It's better if we do it twice, but we got to do it at least once. The other issue, and one of the things that keeps falling by the wayside, and it's not here, it's everywhere, is there is so much information coming out of every new section of the legislature that affects everything we do. I mean, I'm just going to pull up land use. In the last three sections of the, of the Oregon State Legislature, they have changed so many of the rules for planning, that most cities in the state, and when I say most, it was literally ninety-three percent have not even updated from two sessions ago. Okay, and it's not just in land use planning, it's in things that affect us every day. Whether it's the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, and how they're now interpreting things, compared to how they were interpreting things two weeks ago, or whatever. Okay, now, if we have a short business meeting, can we incorporate a work session into that to cover it? Yes. But in my opinion, there is always a need, at least once a month, to have, whether it's an hour work session or a two-hour work session. Because the amount of information we have to know now to do this job, not just good, but do it proper, so that our people can prosper, is growing exponentially. And that was part of my comment about the stipends going out the door was, is we got to get better at this, which means we got to increase the pool of people who can do it. So there's my, there's my thing for work sessions.
I know, I, and I agree with it. I, I don't think we'll, I don't think we're talking about eliminating the work session. The question is, do we incorporate it in, into your, your third week of the month meeting? And I, I think that it can also be, you know, in terms of do we have one on the fourth week of the month or not? That can not only be me telling you, hey, we don't have a, a topic that, that's that substantive this month. That can also be coming from you as well. If, if you as the mayor or one of the other counselors, you hear of something coming out of Salem, or something that another community is doing that you want to talk about, then during your comments, you are also, of course, more than welcome to tell me, hey, we'd really like to have a, or I'd like to have a study session on this. If there's consensus, then we'll schedule it.
So I guess what I'm getting at is, I would still like us to understand that the third weekend of the month is not a regular business meeting. It is reserved for, say, special political meetings or work sessions. Okay, and we do our level best, because it's not always going to happen like tonight, because of the timing of the contract stuff. Right? We had to get it done. Be all right with you, friend. But we, we don't have to have it all the time. So in other words, try to have it known by our third-week meeting. Whether or not we're even going to have a work session.
Right.
Because that work session may be something that's going to take a couple of months to put together all the information in a format that can be understood by non-policy geeks, because they don't expect us all to be policy geeks, okay? And so that the information can be passed along. So if we come to a point where it's like, you know, there's nothing hot that we've got to do, then we call it. That's happened in the past.
Yeah.
It's just in the last couple of years, it's never happened.
Should I?
Okay, right, it should. You're not, pre nineteen, pre twenty nineteen, there was a lot less we had to deal with.
Yeah.
Okay?
Both internally and coming from outside.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And so having the ability to have the third meeting, so in other words, keep that spot open on the calendar is a great idea, but it doesn't mean we always have to use it.
Right.
And I think a lot of that is more communications from us with Rich, saying, you know, these are some things that we need to look at, how do we do that?
We can cut me off after like six or seven phone calls a day as it is.
That's per day.
That's, that's not my fault.
I, I will tell you, Mr. Mayor, that if, if there's a desire from the council to have, um, you know, meetings like you described earlier, with, we want to have meetings with the county commissioners, we want to have meetings with the port. Um, by all means, feel free to communicate those with me, and we can start to get those scheduled.
We got a meeting at the county commissioner.
Okay, the county commissioners, so for those of you that weren't involved in that, well, no. The county commissioners decided coming out of COVID that they were never going to meet with city councils again, because all it was, was a beat on the commission meeting. Well, and you have to understand, I'm laughing because we didn't beat up on them, we kept trying to figure out ways we could work together. You know, how could we get some of our, some of their abated property that's in the city? How do we get that? How, you know, we were trying to do work group things, right? Things where we could work together. It is not my fault that they considered all of us to be beating up on them. But this was at their request, not at city's request. So make sure that's clear and in the public.
For the record, I was not on the council.
All right. So in speaking for the staff wanting less meetings, what can be done to lessen their workload for the third, fourth-week meeting? Because if there's not a whole, if it's just a regular work session, there shouldn't be a lot of stuff. I'm, I may be just dumb on this, I just, what is the work that the staff has to put in for us to sit here and talk about stuff?
In regular meetings, everybody. That's the thing. If it's, if it's a specific work session topic, then it's literally only the department head that's within that thing. And that's, that's one reason why we used to do that. And I like, because remember last meeting, Rich came back with how about we do the reports at the third-weeks meeting? Because then all the, all the data's in for the previous month, and everybody can do all their stuff.
So, uh, staff time-wise, uh, council member Soviet, it really depends on what the, the topic is.
Yeah.
You know, this week's a great example. In this case, it was the city attorney. But for this topic, you have a ninety-page packet that includes your current rules, the model rules, your current charter, the model charter. The city attorney also put together the PowerPoint slide that she's referenced a few times. And, uh, you know, obviously had notes and things ready for her presentation. Uh, so there's the prep time for the, the presentation, assembling the, the documents, getting the information published. Um, if there's an executive session that needs to take place, ordering and picking up the, the food. So i- i- there's not a, there's not a, a short or a simple answer to your question, because it really depends on the, the item. You know, if it's one thing and it's going to take ten minutes, it's no big deal. Um, something like this, that was something that we were, we coordinated over several phone calls about how do we want the presentation to go, what should be included? How the, what's the format going to be, that kind of thing. So it really can vary between ten minutes and more, more in, more in-depth than a business meeting, just depending on the topic, so.
Did that answer? Or did it just make you laugh?
Yes and yes. It's, I think we don't need to change the rules based on that. It sounds like you all are going to consider putting a work session maybe in the second meeting of the month, a shorter one for smaller topics, and then a more as-needed work session for topics like this that are going to take a long time and need their own attention. So there's, so I don't think we need an update to the rules on that.
And I think some of it also comes down to, you know, a couple of the bullets here, but presidents, uh, presences of staff, you know, staff reports, um, as opposed to their necess, them necessarily having to be present. Um, some of that kind of plays into it for our regular meetings, not just for the work sessions, but you know, is there that expectation? And I think we've, we've gone back and forth on that over the, the last many months. Um, whether or not we want all of our department heads here, for instance, even if they're, even if they're simply reciting a you know, a shorter version of a written document that's in front of us, um, is that something that, that we, we want as a council, and that we feel so strongly about as a council? Um, in light of staff kind of giving us the feedback that we're asking a little too much in terms of their time and their labor.
Well, and I think it's reasonable to ask that they be there for the one meeting a month where they have a report. I also let them know, and I think this is, uh, goes without saying, if you have an RCA, if you have a request for council action, you need to be there to give a briefing and answer questions that, that council may have, if that's in the week that is the non-report week. Um, but you know, to your point, uh, as well, counselor, I, I also think about, you know, this is a great conversation for myself as the city manager, the city attorney, to be having with you this evening. But could you imagine if the entire senior leadership team was here for the two hours we've been talking about this, one of them might have said something.
Late, probably asleep already.
So can I make a suggestion? Because now that, now that, I, I also would like your planning, give, you know, give us a written report.
Hmm, good.
Yeah, planning.
Um, but here's my thoughts. I don't think they need to be here, per se, for anything except an RCA. Okay, if they're doing an RCA, they need to be here. If we have all their reports at our third-week of the month meeting, that should be sufficient, because if we have questions about that, we can pass those to Rich, and Rich can get us the answers back, he can email them out, however he wants to do it. But I don't see a reason for staff, if they're doing the written reports, I don't see a reason for staff to be here except for an RCA.
I don't think you're going to have a single solitary argument with that.
Well, well, what is the council thing?
I'll be frank, when David. When David Klein brought this whole not letting us talk to our department heads, I really did not like it. But after speaking with a few of said department heads, I understand, number one, their time is necessary. Number two, some of them don't like getting up here. So I fully agree with what Rod's saying about unless they have a council action. If we have time to read it, if we've got a question, we can send it to you, you can get us an answer and bring it to us at the meeting.
And, and as I, as I've shared with you all, uh, in, in the past as well, and I, I absolutely very much appreciate your point about the value of the time of, of my department heads. At the same time, um, you know, what the mayor has, has explained is very true. If you come to me with, with your question, I'll be happy to get back to you, but I'm going to have to call Dave, or Brian, or you know, whoever the, the person is. And I'm happy to do that. But I also don't want to, I don't feel the need to put a, a, a boundary in between your questions and the staff. If, you know, a- as we've talked about before, if it gets to the point of direction, then you're going to hear from me. Um, but if you call me and, and say, what's the, what's the, the project over here on Main and Highway twenty, I'm going to have to call Brian anyway. Feel free to do that with him, if he ever.
I can explain why. Because you don't want seven of us calling Brian for the same thing that you can answer breaths and money.
This is correct, and what, what you were alluding to, uh, council president, is what I was going to say next, which is, if Brian, in this example, or any of my department heads, starts to feel like, hey, Rich, I'm getting seven calls, then I'll come to you and say, okay, let's figure out a different, a different process. You're right, I don't want them getting inundated with, with seven calls. At the same time, I don't want to, I mean, I'll take them, but I don't want to be inundated with seven calls either.
Question for clarification, so I needed an extra table. So I sent Brian a text, and you said, send your request through me. I'm paraphrasing. So what's the difference?
Whether it's a question, whether it's a question or it's a statement, if the question that you're asking a staff member is to perform an action. And in this case, I know it was a minimal one, but we had had a meeting, and we agreed for three tables. So your question to Brian was, can I get six tables? In that case, you're asking him to perform a specific function. So that's.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I really wanted to.
And I, and I know that you do, and I appreciate it. And, and that's why, you know, I, in the text I sent you, that's why I just said, hey, gentle reminder, right? So, a- and I appreciate you bringing that up, so I can express it to the council as well. That I think is an important distinction. Whether it's a question or it's a statement, if what you're looking for is specific performance, that comes to me. If your question is, hey, what's this project that's going on? I'm not going to, I'm not going to set up that, that wall.
Well, and, and there are even, um, some provisions in our city council rules about even just questions, right? So, um, so I'll, I'll give an example of one that Rich and I were talking about just this week, and it's something that you'll get the answer for uh, shortly anyway. Um, so I, while doing my wonderful post-op, that's about, uh, sort of the past couple of weeks, um, experienced, uh, my postal vehicle, uh, skidding off the road because there was uncontained uh, mud sliding off of a property into the road. Uh, so I reached out to Rich in the capacity more as a citizen, reaching out, saying, hey, this is something that I just experienced, I don't know what is going on, but I'm passing it on to you to do what you will with.
Right.
Now, Rich reached out to me as a counselor to provide the response that he got from our code enforcer who investigated into it. And so Rich and I were talking a little bit about it this afternoon, just to say, hey, since you passed that answer back to me as a counselor, don't forget, pass that to the rest of the council. Right? Because part of it is that when we even ask a question, so even if we ask a question of Brian, or if I reach out to Ron, for instance, and say, hey, Ron, can you look into this thing? Because it might be a possible code thing, or is there something that the city can do about it? Technically, Ron or Rich, in that case, is supposed to, because I'm a counselor, asking for information, send the answer to all staff, right? And so there are some kind of processes that kind of go into it as well, and that's where, that's where the guidance that, um, that we get from OGET, for instance, is always to say, whether we're doing it as a citizen, or we're doing it as a city counselor, you chat to Rich. Because Rich will know how to prioritize it, what processes to follow, how the follow-up methods should be handled.
And, yeah.
And it protects all of us.
And I'm going to tag one more thing under that. If you have a question, say for Brian, include Rich on the emails.
Yes.
Right? Because then he knows, here it is, it's just a question.
Yeah.
And he's in the loop. So let's say, if one of you then asks the question, he's already got the answer sitting there.
And, and I'll also say, like, like I said to council member Soviet's point a minute ago, I don't want to set up a, a, a an unnecessary boundary. I don't want to set up a, 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 an unnecessary boundary. But if you're ever at a place where you're unsure, you know, could, could this be taken as a direction? Or am I possibly inundating the staff member? Then I'm still more than welcome, or more than happy to take those, those inquiries. I just, you know, to your point, uh, council member, I just, I don't want to set up a boundary that isn't needed. And, you know, if, if it crosses the, if it crosses the, the, the line of council's role, I'll let you know. Um, but if you're ever unsure, or you want to, you want to really respect that line, then that's still my role and I'm happy to fill.
So Savani, are there any other pressing question you have for us?
Um, I have three topics that I'm hoping I can just breeze through unless they're.
On the structure of council meetings, I do have one other topic that I want to incorporate, uh, into the conversation. And that's around how we handle or how we, um, codify, um, public comment into our order of business for council.
Oh, okay.
Is that something you have on your list?
Um, it's not, but I do have a suggestion. So the public comment, there is this, the League of Oregon Cities has a very specific. Yes. Um, and so that is one area where ours is obviously not as specific. And so.
Very, very vague. And, um, the reason I, the reason I bring it up is because I think that now this is the public information officer in me that's talking. Um, I think that there's a disconnect in what our intention of public comment is as council and what the community, based on how they read our agendas, what they actually think we do about public, public comment. So when we have written in our documents about how our council meetings are going to be run, that the only stated public comment opportunity is at the top of the meeting and it's to speak to things that are not on the agenda. Way that is interpreted is that we are not open to hearing things that are not on, that are on the agenda. So even though Rod regularly, especially on hotline issues, will offer the opportunity for people to speak up when we get to that item, they don't assume that they will have that opportunity. So my recommendation, and this is in alignment with, thank you Savani for including and pointing to the League of Oregon Cities recommended order of business. At the beginning of the meeting, having a section for public comment items on the agenda other than stated public hearings. And then toward the end of the meeting, kind of like we have, I think on our, on our October fifteenth meeting, I noticed our agenda had a like new agenda items, uh, point that we, that could be added. But having something at the end for public comments for things that we did not discuss that night. So that will very, to me, very clearly tell the community, you have an opportunity in a very specific structured place at the top to come and make your point and then leave if you don't want to stick around for the rest.
So I agree with you on part of, okay? Um, we should put something in our rules and this would be up to you guys. So you can change them after I leave. But maybe we do put something in the rules about how I will let you speak to the topic that's there. When there's been people here to speak, I've always done it now. So, and I know what you're saying, people are what you do, you could give them a gold card and they still wouldn't, uh, use it for whatever. I personally can't stand in, most of the people I've talked to in our line of work don't like it either. The comment period at the end of the meeting, because that tells the public, you got to wait until all the way to the end. You have to sit through all of our stuff before they can even say a word. So I, I don't like that, but I would like to see the addition in the, in the rules saying that we will take comment on specific items on our agenda.
So just in the current rule, there's actually two places for public comment. So there's the general one at the beginning for comments and meetings on the agenda. I also like that sometimes people have limited time, but they need to share something. Um, and then there's a separate section for public may be allowed to comment on ma- matters before the council at the discretion of the presiding officer.
So that's all that we choose.
And that should, I, but I think we should conform that more to the model.
Yeah. And I think, and I think, one, most people in the community don't read our city council rules.
I know, but we, but if we put it out, say we put it out as a blurb on the website and make, you know, as we're lack of a better word, you know how they will look at agendas?
Yeah. Yes.
If that becomes a line on every agenda, saying we will take comment on any item.
Yes.
Right. Do it that way.
So, right, so I also want to be careful about, and this is again more entirely from how the per- the perception of it is. I think we should not say anything about at the discretion of any of that stuff. Maybe what we do is, to your point, Rod, maybe they are just back to back at the top of the meeting. You want to talk about things that are on the agenda, you talk about them now.
But here's why, here's why we went to that. Because what would happen is, because we used to do it, the only time you could talk is at the beginning. Okay? During the presentation of whatever it was, questions would get answered to the person that's there. And, or other, or they would come up with other questions that they could then ask for more clarification. I take it back to kind of like the, the planning commission, the way, the way that's done where it's.
On Monday.
Mariners aren't playing anymore. You're not allowed to have that running. So, and so like on planning commission, you go, uh, for lack of a better word, plaintiff or, you know, in, interested party, other institution. And so you get multiple chances to follow other people's ex- explanations and get even deeper.
And I, and I'd say that that doesn't have to be eliminated, right? So let's say, let's say at the top of the meeting, we have a, a limited, a limit of thirty total minutes that's dedicated to public comment.
Well, we can, but I will tell you from lots of experience, and if you want to follow the lead, you can ask them. If you put limits, you can put limits on the individual, but if you put limits on the room.
There are ways you can do it, but.
Well, it's currently in the rules.
It is in the rules.
But it also can be expanded by the council. So I assume that man would recommend that be the just general.
Some places use a lottery type system, uh, where, you know, you get tickets, whatever, but I'm not saying that we can't also have, right? So let's say at the beginning, we have back to back comments for anything that's on the agenda, anything that's not on the agenda can all be at the top. And however we define that, great, but we can still keep that at the discretion, when we get to those discussion or decision items, that if that topic is important and we get a great presentation that raises more for us. And for the people who maybe want to stick around for the presentation, that they could, at the discretion of the presiding officer, have an opportunity for public comments between the discussion and the vote, which is what I think we currently have in our council rules, that at the discretion of the presiding officer, after the discussion and before the vote, the public comment may be accepted. I think, I think keeping that is fine, and that can just stay in the council rules and not actually have to show up on the agenda necessarily. We can put it on the agenda if we want, but it doesn't have to be there. But I think if we stayed on the agenda, yes, to any comments that hit on the agenda or off the agenda at the top.
But, okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't disqualify the.
I understand what you're saying, but I also note this. In my years of being here, in my years of working with other municipalities, what that time goes, turns into, if you can. All that turns into is the growing of fecal matter without facts. If you take and put them into when we're actually discussing it and they have to hear all the things that are going into that decision, not only do you minimize just the, the reaction, okay, which is what you would get at the beginning. You not only minimize the reaction, but you increase the education. Because people will stay if they're adamant about something. People won't stay if all they want to do is fling stuff.
I guess I'd only add that we've had it on the agenda that you can only use that public comment time at the beginning to talk about things that are not on the agenda. And people have been coming and using that time to talk about agenda items anyway, but they've been doing it with anger and doing it as what they view as an act of defiance. We've seen that in the time that we've been here. So they're doing it because they feel like they don't have any other opportunity. And if we're going to give them a microphone for three minutes, damn it, they're going to use it. I think, I think that if we show them, and that's all that I'm really suggesting here, is we know that when we do have a topic that we are discussing, that when we get to the topic, that Rod's going to open it up, or whoever the presiding officer is, is going to open it up. But unless we're very clearly saying to people, your comments on these topics are going to be opt- like, you're going to have the option to speak to them. Right now, we have nothing that says that to them in a very clear, transparent way. And so they don't show up.
What is the rest of the council?
I have only ever had one complaint about our public comment. And that was from somebody who commented in the beginning, commented all the way through the whole thing. And then Marion, when I'm giving my city council comments, proceeded to think that it was his, you know, he could argue with me. And I cut him off and said, no, this is not your time to talk. And then, oh, good glory, the whole internet blew up. So you can't make everybody happy. You can, you can do everything, you can leave them to water and they will still hydrate to death because they're not going to, you know. Sometimes that's just the way it is. I think most of the time we're very good with public comment. If there's somebody out there that wants to speak to something, we've been very, I think we're very liberal. And, and allowing people to comment and be a participant part of our process. I don't think we should change that by saying, okay, no, you can only talk. I mean, we kind of do it, sometimes have to do it that way. I'm not in favor of limiting how many people can speak. If five hundred people come here and speak, I'm going to sit here for all three minutes for every person.
And I've been here for those three hour, we don't even get out of. But that's what I'm getting at, is that.
We've done it.
I, I have never held anybody to the thirty minute.
Yeah. I don't want to get to eleven thirty.
I personally don't have an issue with us adding that second public comment for things that are on the agenda, but there absolutely has to be. Like we do three minutes for not on the thing, we have put that on there. It has to be held firm because as you have seen over this last people have gone past three minutes, five minutes, ten minutes, fifteen minutes, go away, come back and start screaming again. It has to be limited to one person that you come up, you make your comment or whatever time limit. And then you're done for that section of the commenting. You don't get to come back up over and over and over again.
What if we just changed the wording a little bit and said the public comment free provides a public with an opportunity to address the city council regarding items not on the agenda? There will be time allotted for you to speak to items that are on the agenda later.
During the agenda item.
Yes, during the agenda item, please let me comment to three minutes. You got it all right there. There it is. There it will be later. Thank you very much. Please enjoy our meeting.
I got no problem with that.
But that does invite them to speak later. So that's, I like that.
But it also makes it public that it's known.
I'm, I'm with Tracy. She agrees with Tracy.
Or you still want that second comment period at the end?
I think, I think you could even go a step further. And just emphasize that it doesn't have to be at the public comment section, it could just be on anything, whether it's on the agenda or not.
Here's the problem with that. They start talking about it and they want to argue about it before they even hear the facts. And you're never going to get past the comment section then.
Exactly.
And, and I guess I, I guess I kind of broads argument and, and expand on it a little bit. The presenter also gets to hear what the community is concerned about before they present. Right? So in the same way that the presentations inform the community about things that they might have questions about that could influence the comments that they make after the presentation or after the discussion. It could be argued that the public comment could help the presenter to understand the topics that the community is interested in.
So.
Oh, yes, you may.
Um, I think you can have a little more flexibility for that portion of it. So you can say, public comment at the beginning for items not on the agenda. You all get to hear it at the beginning, people can leave if they need to. And then you, we can make the rules more flexible so that if there's a discussion item where you know a lot of people want to come in and talk about something, there's going to be a presentation, maybe you set public comment before the presentation. If it makes more sense to have the discussion first and then have the public comment, I've also seen the mayor take public comment kind of during the discussion. I think all of that is acceptable as long as you're keeping it fair for everybody in terms of the three minutes. So we can be a little more flexible there.
And a, a, a word Savani used, uh, which is very important and something council member Sylvia said a minute ago as well, is whatever your time limit is, that's your time limit.
Right.
I worked with a city in the past, I'm not going to say on the record which one it was. But they had a, a, a two-minute time limit for public comment, and you can imagine that was pretty difficult for a lot of people. And if it was something that a council member was really interested in hearing about, the two minutes would end, one of them would make a motion, the other one would second it to extend another two minutes to this person. But they wouldn't do that for him. And then that's, you, you all can see, I can see the face, totally see the issue.
There's state laws that say that we're not even, we're not allowed to do that. If one, if one person is cut off at two minutes and then another person is given even one second longer, we are by law required to offer the previous person another second to speak.
Equal access, yeah.
Jackie?
I just know that when public comment was held to the end, it took forever. Because people would sit here and then they go on forever. Three minutes is forever at the end of the meeting.
Go ahead, Savani.
So I think, um, the adjustment, just on the agenda, making that clear on the agenda, and then we can take a look at um, some, some of the model language and see if there are ways to make councils intent clear in the rules.
So what was your next item?
There are three more. Can I just read them to you? Well, then we added. Five minutes to just kind of read through that. You did it, sister. And then you all can tell me if you want to discuss it tonight or send. Okay, so.
I just love you.
Okay, so council compensation waiver. There just should be a formalized process for this, whether that's an email to a particular staff person, whether where, you know, whenever there's a new council member, you state on the record, yes or no.
You shouldn't have.
Just a process.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Sorry.
You know what? I deserved that, so. That's okay. Um, there was actually a, a discussion, uh, amongst the staff on, on this topic because, uh, we're in the process of issuing the first, uh, the first stipend.
First back.
And one of the things that we had to then go through, we had a, uh, uh, spreadsheet that staff was keeping on your attendance. And there was a council member who came up to me after the last meeting and said, hey, I thought I, I waived mine, uh, but we didn't have that on the record. So one of the things that staff, uh, suggested and wanted to see what council thought about this is uh, at each meeting, having an attendance sheet that you would fill out and, you know, it would be kind of somewhat on, uh, onus on, on council to track your attendance, but it would also give you an option on there to say.
Wave or not wave?
Yep.
We kind of do that when we do roll call, so the attendance is there, but can't we just have a form that either opts us in or opts us out of this? That way, when you get on council, you sign that stuff. That's part of the, you know, the whole process. So it makes it easy all the way around.
One of the, one of the things that we've, what's that? One of the things that we've talked about is maybe having it be an annual, if you've waived it before, having it be an annual thing. The first, you know, July first, you expressed that, just to confirm uh, that that's your, your desire. And then it also, um, maybe it's January first, because then that way, if new members are, are elected, maybe that's just something we do in the first meeting of, of Jan.
I think that if there's a change of mind, it should be a forty-five day delay to process.
I like it.
Like if I have waived, and now all of a sudden I changed my mind and my, I'm on the money, I have to wait forty-five days to give you time to process it before I can get it.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Next.
Next.
Okay, um, this is a clarifying question. The charter requires city attorney tenants at the council meetings unless excused, but there is no process in the rules on how that happens. So I don't know if it is from the mayor. I don't know if it, uh, never happens.
That's how it's happened in the past, is that we talk about the agenda and we decide whether or not the attorney has to be there.
Okay, so that should be, um, let's just clarify that in the rules, that it's city manager in consultation.
And if it's the flip side, Savani, and, and you're needing to let us know that, um, you're not able to attend a meeting and do we want a replacement or do we want to excuse you? I would say the same thing. Let me know. And then in consultation with the mayor, we can let you know, oh, we need one of your colleagues or you're excused.
Okay, sounds great. Um, this is final one. The ordinance section of the charter requires you currently to read it in full at two meetings, and that substantive amendments are required in writing. Um, and then a few other provisions that are similar to a League of Oregon Cities model. League of Oregon Cities model allows you to approve an ordinance at two meetings, it does not require the reading in full, and allows substantive amendments to be either read aloud or published in writing beforehand. And so this is gonna be a charter amendment that we are going to recommend. We can, I just wanted to let you know, we can discuss it tonight, or we can discuss it at a later date, but that the model language is more streamlined, um, less burdensome.
I like that.
I like.
I would follow the poll.
Maybe we have for the last, the third one.
Let's go with the model and get it on the, and whether it's May or November, doesn't matter, but get it.
Okay, and then there'll also be, like I mentioned, cleanup items, um, that on their own wouldn't be enough for a charter amendment, but if you're recommending that, then we'll include this.
Jackie.
In regards back to the stipending thing, one of the things that we used to have is, um, like a time card, it was a time card, and we used to have to fill it out every month to get credit for our volunteer hours. But why couldn't that same time card be used as this stipend proof? If we had to fill out the volunteer time card again.
I will.
Proof of your meeting.
I will ask the oracle of, uh, City of Toledo knowledge, uh, AKA Cindy Olman. Uh, I'll ask that tomorrow and, and, uh, see if that would.
Yeah, because sometimes.
As a cool smoker mayor.
Okay.
Oh, that's wild, though.
Yeah, but we had to have them stupid things all the time.
We put in the chart, or I believe that you could show up a video, and it's still considered being here at the meeting because of the whole Zoom thing too.
Uh, is that in the, is that in the charter you were?
Oh.
The remote, remote attendance council members is allowed?
My guess is that it's not at the charter. Um, you should probably make sure remote.
Maybe.
Not for a turn that I see.
Yes, yes, yeah, we should be, we should allow for. Well, I didn't spur turn.
But I'm the bouncer, the bouncer has.
No, I don't know if.
Although it would be prohibited by our charter. So unless, unless.
The bouncer didn't show up.
Yeah, but if, I, we've been nitpicking enough, we might, we might just nitpick that, then it sure doesn't happen.
So my, so attendance, I don't, I think that both of these documents, well, at least the charter.
It would, no matter.
Um, I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't say one way, it doesn't say in-person attendance, it just says.
Attendance.
So I think that's.
See the rain.
Yes.
Anything else?
Nothing from me.
All right, Rich, you got anything for us?
I have nothing more, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, there is no council comments on this list, so I'm only gonna make one comment. Jackie, I'm so sorry we went over time, and with that, we adjourned.